Good morning. It's 9:00 AM and I call to order the February 7th, 2023, meeting of the Celine County Board of Commissioners. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Hay.
Here.
Commissioner Shadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Here.
Commissioner Wees.
Here.
I see you please stand and join me in a flag salute followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We now move to the citizens' input where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes, and pertaining to items that are not on today's agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to address the commission? Seeing none, we'll bring it back and we will go into the regular agenda. The first thing is our consent agenda, and I will tell you that I'm going to ask that item number nine be pulled for discussion here this morning. And we'll go from there. Are there any other items that commissioners wish to discuss?
Move approval with noted that nine is going to be pulled off?
Second.
All those in favor of the approved agenda, with the exception of number nine, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And at this time, we will, I will ask that we call on our county administrator for the number nine, which is approval of work for hire agreement, agreement covering Dr. Lisa Meander's work for the ARPA fines and fees project. And I know this is, it's pretty old. It goes clear back to when we first discussed it clear back in May. And so, it's a substantial amount of money that I would like some clarification on, I guess, is what I'll go for, for clarity's sake.
So, as part of the American Rescue Plan Act framework plan, the commission set aside funding for criminal justice matters. The biggest chunk of that, of course, ended up being, later in the year, renovation of courtrooms in this building. But part of what was done was a grant program in the community. Through that, the commission approved funding for several different grants, one of which was a grant to the county itself through our Community Corrections Department. And the purpose of that grant is to study the impact of fines and fees on folks in the community, the folks who have been involved in the criminal justice system. That grant amount is for $50,000. So, as the chairman said, it is a significant amount of money. As part of that, there is a contract with a researcher from K-State Manhattan who is in charge of collating all the information that comes in from community surveys that are being conducted and putting that into a digestible format, coming up with statistics, et cetera. And so, that contract was referenced at the time, as the chair said, that the grant was approved by the commission to, for Community Corrections to apply for that grant. That grant never got finalized. We got the first bill from this researcher with K-State and said, "Oh, where's the contract?" And so, we're going back and fixing that by getting the contract in place. This is something that, like I said, was contemplated from the very beginning of the project. It just sort of got missed in the transition of staff at Community Corrections. The contract has been reviewed both by our ARPA consultants and by county counselor. And I'm not sure what other clarification I can provide, but I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Well, that pretty much did it there. I mean, $50,000 is a lot of money. It doesn't affect our budget, but we're still, you know, in charge of that ARPA money and for us to send it down the road for something else. My question would be, of course, is what are they going to find and what can we do about it if they do find something that needs to be adjusted? We don't have any power to adjust the fines and so forth, I don't think.
Yeah, generally speaking, that's correct. This, as I said, these projects that were done through what we call the Safer and Healthier Celine County Grants, these were really projects in the community. This particular project was something where a community group came together and was interested in this, but they weren't a legal entity. They weren't a 501(c)(3) or something. And so, Community Corrections stepped in to sort of be the entity to flow the funding through. But yeah, it's, I assume that they're going, we don't know because we're still in the process of collecting, or the committee group is still in the process of collecting the data. We don't know what they're going to find, but I assume that they will probably find that there is some impact that prevents people who are involved in the criminal justice system and have significant fines and fees associated with that from doing other things like driving to work and those kinds of things. As for what we would do about that, you're correct, there's, the county does not generally set those fines and fees. Many of them are established by state law. Others are functions of municipal court or some other jurisdiction that the county does not have control over. There are a few things that we could potentially do. One is potential for a driver's license restoration clinic. That has been discussed by the Criminal Behavior Reduction Committee. Douglas County is doing that. The city of Wichita has done that through their municipal court, city of Topeka. So, that's an approach that the county could potentially take, just to sponsor that, not to actually, you know, be in charge of it. Otherwise, I think that this, the group that's interested in this problem would probably be in a position where they would have to take the information that's collected to other folks, state legislators, city officials, that sort of thing.
Well, you've answered my question about how we got involved, "we" being the county, and that being that through Community Corrections, because I was going to ask, what is their role in this? And you've just answered that. So, I guess, all of this having been said, I've got a problem with it myself, but I think it's probably something that needs to be studied, but I don't understand what the county's role would be in that. And that's me, I guess. So, other commissioners probably have a question or comment, maybe they do or don't.
I guess the question I got, you said we received a, received a bill from Ms. Meander, and there was not a contract in place. If this wouldn't have impacted our budget, I mean, she could have been SOL with trying to collect fees for something that she was doing without a contract. Number one, I think we need to take a closer look if we're going to, I mean, when we do something like this, to make sure that that contract is in place before the work is started. So, somebody don't look like they got egg on their face by the time the time comes around to either collect or pay.
Duly noted, and I'll take responsibility for that.
I don't think anything has changed since May, other than, I agree, it's a long time ago. So much ARPA action has taken place, and it's hard for me to collectively remember all of that. On this item, it was county ARPA funds that were, that they approached to tap into, and we had set up what we thought ways to disperse it. At that time, it had our approval, other than FUBAR with the contract, and I don't think anything has changed. So, I'm in favor of getting the contract signed.
The, going back to the minutes of Tuesday, May 24th, it appears that we have approved this. We have already approved this.
That's correct. It came before the commission, actually, in three separate actions. In April of 2022, you approved the grant program. In May, then Director Grievous came before you and asked for your permission to apply as part of the grant program, which you approved. And then, there was an independent review committee, not county employees, who reviewed all the applications we received and made recommendations. And that came back before the commission in June, I believe it was June 21st of last year, and the commission approved the awards at that time.
Well, I guess I'll have to plead guilty here, going back to, I'm the, maybe the step-grandchild that inherited a lot of money. And, you know, I, we inherited a lot of money with ARPA, and I've been pretty well rubber-stamping stuff that goes through here, and we should, probably some of this shouldn't have happened, maybe. But at any rate, that having been said, I think I've satisfied my curiosity here. I'm going to ask if there's any public comment on this, but there doesn't appear to be any, so we will move along. We will move to action items, number one.
Mr. Chair, do we need to go ahead and have a motion on that since it was taken off the consent?
It wasn't really taken off. It was, it was set aside for discussion.
Okay.
I don't know if we do need approval. I don't.
Would probably be helpful for just clarity's sake in the minutes.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move that we, let me find it.
Number nine.
I move that we accept number nine as part of the consent agreement.
Second. Been moved in second that we approve item number nine on the consent agenda, which is approval of work for hire agreement with Dr. Lisa Meander. Any further discussion? All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign, motion carries five zero. Thank you, Jim. We'll move to action items, item number one.
Resolution 23-2384, adopting changes to the Celine County Comprehensive Plan with Tim Hamilton, Planning and Zoning Director.
Good morning. Okay, good morning, Tim.
Good morning. Long time, no see.
Right.
This, on December 5th, 2022, the planning board did recommend unanimously to approve our update that we've been working on the past couple of years to the comprehensive plan titled Celine County Comprehensive Plan 2050. The state of Kansas recommends municipalities update their adopted plans every seven to 10 years. Our last full update of this plan was done in 2008 with a minor revision in 2014. It was determined that development trends and overall demographics within the county over the last few years have not really warranted any major changes to the goals and objectives outlined within the current plan. Basically, the goals and objectives that are in each chapter that kind of outline, you know, what we're going to be doing over the next several years. The, furthermore, I would say due to the COVID-19 pandemic, public participation was limited to planning commission hearings published for public comment. Summary of the changes to the document are establishment of provisions for development within the recently adopted Fort Riley to Smoky Hill unmanned aircraft corridor, removal of redundant language and consolidation of duplicate goals within Chapter Four of the document, language clarifying the promotion of extension of public facilities to underserved areas, update of transportation facility standards in Chapter Five to reflect any changes to the Road and Bridge Department, update of census and economic data in the appendix, and an update to the maps to make them easier to read and reflect the updated floodplain boundaries and changes to city limit lines. And I apologize, I don't think I included those, but they were so big, the files were so big, I didn't want to overstep my limit there on that. So, I mean, but the maps in general are the same as what are currently adopted, but they've, they've been made easier to read and they've been updated for the current floodplain and city limits. The alternatives to action on this would be to approve the resolution, adopting the amendments to the plan, or send back to the planning commission for further consideration. Staff is recommending approval of the document, Celine County Comprehensive Plan 2050, to replace the plan currently enforced. As far as budget impact, this request will not have an impact on the budget for the department, so.
All right, questions or comments from commissioners, please.
Tim, the only thing I wanted to ask you is the, on that updated floodplain, floodplain boundaries, those haven't changed at all, you said? Is that what, is that right?
They did change. From 2008, they were the old, the current version has the 2008 version, and they were updated in 2018. And so, I wanted to make sure that those were included, those changes and so.
So, do those boundaries increase or decrease?
It varies. I mean, it's, some areas they increase, some areas they decreased.
Okay, thank you.
And, Tim, I just wanted to ask, are those maps available on, in your, on the county website?
What I'm going to do is, once this gets approved, if this gets approved today, I said, then what I'll do is put all of those links to our website, you know, to the plan on our website for our department. So, yeah, you would be able to see those.
Okay, because, because that was one of my notes here is that, is like, you referred to a lot of different maps throughout this whole thing here, and there was no maps involved here. So, I'm thinking, well, the boundary lines and changed and everything else, and I'm thinking, is all of these maps going to be available?
Yes.
On the, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Tim, one question I have. Sometimes when there's changes in documents and such, you'll have some stricken, the new verbiage put in. It's easier for me to navigate to know what those, what the change of our old plan was compared to this new plan. And I don't know if something in the future that could be done, but it helps me identify exactly what that change was.
Sure, sure. And in general, what I did is, there were like areas within, like the Chapter Four, that were, which is where most of the goals and objectives are located. There was a lot of redundancy in, like, you'll have like one goal that repeats one other goal that's down at the bottom of the same section. And I said, it's worded kind of the same. And so, I said, well, let's consolidate those two. It's that kind of thing, you know.
Thank you.
Anything else? Is there any public comment regarding requests for action here? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for action, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt Resolution 23-2384 as presented.
It's been moved in second that we adopt Resolution 23-2384. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign, motion carries five zero. Thank you, Tim. We'll move to item number two.
Hiring incentives for professional positions with Jason Tiller, Health Department Director.
Morning, Jason.
Good morning, gentlemen. As I'm sure that you're aware, hiring for professional positions such as nurses and dieticians has been an ongoing challenge for quite a while. This past fall, the commission approved a grant for home health for retention and recruiting. But how that grant, though, is certain, or set to expire come March 31st. Within our state formula grant, we have a budget line specifically for workforce development that currently still has $10,000, a little over $10,000 in it for the grant year that ends this June. And this particular grant is one that we get each year with our aid to local grants, and I intend to keep workforce development as a part of that grant for sustainment. The incentive would be for $1,500 at the successful completion of 60 days for our primary or for the four positions that we have the most difficult with, which are our two home health RNs, our health educator RN, and then the WIC RN or dietitian, whichever one we are lucky to hire first. So, today, I'm seeking permission to continue to provide those incentives from the Workforce Development Grant as a tool for recruiting in those positions. So, of course, alternatives fractions to deny the request or approve the request. I am asking and recommending that you would approve the request to continue to provide those hiring incentives, $1,500, at the successful completion of 60 days. As these funds are already budgeted in our workforce development, for workforce development through our state formula grant, there is not an impact to the budget by this approval.
Okay. You hit on something important there in that it's already in the budget. I'm going to ask, Marilyn, if you would come forward for a second. I have a HR question involved in this. And my question is, in the past 12, 24 months, what has been our success rate when we offer a monetary incentive for hiring?
I don't have the numbers with me. I could just tell you the struggles and the challenges that we've had. We've been offering that for the corrections officer position, and we've had a little bit of success, but we still have problems retaining employees. With Jason and the positions that he's asking for on this, one of the positions has been vacant since November of '21, and then the other one was vacated, I think it was January, February of 2022.
That's about right.
And so, these positions have sat empty for quite a while. We're struggling, just like other employers, and it's a very competitive field.
And that answers my question right on target. I don't think monetary incentives, at least for, for an hiring incentive, is working anymore. Everybody in the county, in the state, and everywhere is offering hiring incentives for a monetary thing. I don't, I don't think that's what needs to be done. I think the pay needs to be adjusted for the positions that are hard to fill, whether it be a nurse, a dietitian, a justice worker over in the jail, it doesn't, a truck driver at the Road and Bridge. Those positions, rather than across-the-board increase, those positions need to be re-identified by the county and, and the pay increased to, you know, obviously, we can't hire people for those jobs, so the pay needs to be increased.
Well, we can certainly do some research and bring back before you on those really hard-to-fill positions and come back with a recommendation.
Based on this RFA that we have before us today, I mean, you've already got it in your, in your budget, so I'm not going to vote against that. But I think as we begin our work on the budget, which coming up pretty quick, we need to identify those positions that we can't fill. And I hate to say it, but we need to bite the bullet, and we're going to have to put some fairly hefty pay increases in there on those positions.
And to clarify what you're saying, you've always thought it shouldn't just be a blanket for everybody. Just because we're having trouble finding this job, if you, if you raise that a certain amount, that doesn't mean everybody else gets.
Exactly.
That's been a frustration of yours.
Exactly. And that's, that's the way that government has worked, I think, unfortunately. This guy that supposedly has a job that's less qualified than I am to do my job, he shouldn't get a raise and I not get one. I'm not going to buy that this time around. Those positions need to be filled. They're very important to us. They're very important to our organization to have, to have a dietitian or a truck driver or a jailer. We got to have them. And because he gets a raise or she gets a raise, doesn't mean that it goes across the board everywhere. I'm sorry to say that, but that's.
We can bring something back for you.
And you know, I think Chairman Vidrickson's right. I mean, it, you know, it's like getting a box of chocolates for Valentine's Day, and you're all happy because you got it, but when they're gone, they're gone. You know, that incentive seems like, you know, you get that money upfront or get it within that certain amount of time. Once it's gone, you know, it's still the same old pay. And I think that he's right. I think we do need to look at raising the rates. And I think that he's right, I think we do need to look at raising the rates, you know, we're looking September of trying to open a new, or we'll be opening a new jail. And it's going to be really, really tough if we don't have the people to fill those positions. So I think, you know, instead of waiting, it's sooner than later of seeing what we can do to get whatever hiring we need to be done.
Okay.
Well, the difficult thing right now, Joe, is the budget is set for 2023. That's the difficult part, but we're going to have to find some money perhaps somewhere or certainly going to take a look at the positions. So, other comments? Are there any comments from the public? Okay, I'll bring it back to the Commission for Action, please.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the Hiring Incentives for Professional Positions
Second motion. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the request to provide hiring incentives for 2023-24. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign, motion does carry. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
We'll move to item number three.
Budget Adjustment for Legislative Subagreement with the Salina Chamber with Philip Smith-Haines County Administrator.
Good morning, Phil.
Good morning again, Commissioners. So this is an item that we've talked about a couple of times. The county is participating with a number of other institutions in the community in a legislative advocacy campaign to help try and continue the economic development successes that we've had in the community over the last couple of years. The Salina Area Chamber of Commerce has been the lead agency on that. On January 3rd, Renee Duxler from the Chamber was here and talked about the legislative platform. At that time, we also mentioned that there would be a, an agreement coming, that's finally here, and it would commit the county to $9,166 to pay for a portion of a contract that the Chamber has with Fulton Seifgen Law Firm to do legislative advocacy services in Topeka. We certainly have $9,166 in the budget, we just don't have it in the right place in the budget. This is really an economic development expense, it should be lumped in with the other Chamber expenses. That budget is completely tapped out. We do have funding in the appropriations budget, so my request is that you authorize me to move the funding from the appropriations budget to the economic development budget to pay for this cost and authorize the Chair to sign the agreement. It has been approved by County Counselor, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
My question, I don't see it here necessarily, but I assume that we're talking about the Chamber of Commerce, the City of Salina, the Airport Authority, and is, I don't know, USDA 305?
The 305 is not a party to this particular agreement, although they did participate in the, in the development of the platform. It's city, county, Chamber, Airport Authority, SKEDO, and K-State Salina.
Salina-Salina County Economic Development Organization. And I want to make mention of one fact there, that this seems to be the beginning to when we've finally gotten those four or five organizations together and talked to each other about what we want to do and work together with it. I just haven't seen that happen. Maybe, maybe the city will get together with the county, or the city gets together with the Airport Authority or whatever, but we don't all get together, and we need to have more of that. And I appreciate the, all the other organizations that are willing to do that. So, with that having been said, other comments from the Commissioners? Any public comment? Quiet group. All right, we'll bring it back to the Commission. First of all, I don't know, there are a couple of other organizations that are represented here today, would you like to make a comment, or does this pretty well cover it for you?
Not much more to say.
Okay, good enough. You're going to, it looks like we're going to participate to the tune of $9,166, I think so. All right.
Mr. Chairman, I move we authorize by your signature the agreement and the County Administrator to proceed, process the budget amendment, excuse me.
Second motion. It's been moved and seconded that we authorize by signature for the Chairman the agreement and the County Administrator also to process the budget amendment. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign, motion carries five zero. And thank you. We will move to item number four.
ARPA Update with Philip Smith-Haines County Administrator.
Morning again, Phil.
Good morning again. So, we were just talking about this under the consent calendar, that there are lots of items that have come before this Commission over the last 20 months, and we have 20 months left to go. We're pretty much at the midway point of the American Rescue Plan Act funding. And so I attempt, each time I bring one of these before you, to go through the whole history, so we kind of have that, that record and can remind the public and Commissioners of what we've done so far. There are a number of things in the works, changes, I'll be meeting with Broadband Task Force this afternoon, going over some things with them. We have some other agreements coming, we've had requests from a couple of other agencies, and so certainly anticipate that we will be bringing another report in front of you within the next month or six weeks. But today, I wanted to focus on two recommended changes in particular. The first of which is regarding air service in the community. So, if you'll recall, way back when, in 2021, this Commission approved an agreement with the Salina Airport Authority, and the concept was to do what's called a minimum revenue guarantee, which would essentially incentivize SkyWest Airlines to establish new service. And the target for that service was a nonstop flight between Salina and Houston Intercontinental. And that, we signed that agreement in, in 2021 with the Airport Authority, and it kept sort of getting pushed back, pushed back, pushed back. Eventually, in last spring, we ended up canceling the agreement, and that was due to the pilot shortage that was affecting the airline industry, and United, SkyWest was just not in a position to expand service. And so, we pivoted. We said, okay, if pilots are the problem, let's do something to address the pilot shortage. And so, we held some money for a number of months to, at first, it was a flight simulator for pilots at K-State Salina, and we could purchase something like that. And then, and then it morphed into some other training that might be needed. And then, last fall, we said, okay, well, the real issue that we're, that the airline industry is experiencing is not just the pilot shortage, but also a maintenance issue. And so, both K-State Salina and Salina Area Technical College have programs where they train folks up, and maybe they, perhaps in conjunction with private business in town, we could support SkyWest to do some, some training and increase maintenance. So we've gone through all of these sort of changes in the background, have never brought these back to the Commission, because they were all sort of conceptual discussions at the time. We have finally landed on something that, that we're presenting to the Commission, and that is to establish a maintenance base at the Salina Airport. And what that would allow, unlike training, where you train people up and then they potentially move out of the community, establishing a maintenance base would provide a more or less permanent solution to help this community be more attractive to airlines in the future. And hopefully, at some point, and Tim Rogers is here, and he can talk more intelligently about this than I can, but at some point, perhaps even wean us off of the essential air service contract with the feds. That would be the ideal, right, is if this community could support air service without federal subsidies, there would be an economic incentive for, for folks to fly in here. One way to go about that is to make this the maintenance hub, and by doing that, that potentially increases the flights that would, that would flow through Salina and potentially puts Houston back on the table again. So, we're, we've kind of, in a way, come full circle, back to the idea of incentivizing a Houston flight, but doing it in a completely different way that we think is probably actually more sustainable. And so, the current recommendation is for the county to contribute $400,000 from ARPA funding, and that that be paired with $100,000 that the Airport Authority has set aside, and $400,000 that the City of Salina, City Commission approved last night from their economic development incentives. And that total pool of $900,000 would then be used to, to stand up this maintenance base in conjunction with the airport, SkyWest, and private business. We didn't have $400,000 in the ARPA plan. We had been targeting that number, but we've been moving money around. The last update that the Commission received, we had $345,836. So we're just a shade under $55,000 short of that $400,000 goal. So, it's staff's recommendation that we cancel one of the proposals that we had been holding within the business and nonprofit category. We had been holding $20,000 for a business fair for seniors. That actually occurred, and the agency that sponsored that did not ask for county support, even though they told us they were going to. So, like, okay, well, it happened, you didn't need the money, let's free up that money and put it towards this project. Also recommending $28,164 be transferred from the broadband infrastructure category. As I mentioned, I'll be meeting with the Broadband Task Force this afternoon and go over potential budget to bring back to the Commission, and do believe that based on where we are with broadband, that we could accommodate that change. And then, we had $1,000 where we had just made, we held $1,000 more than what we actually signed a contract for, free that up, and then the last $5,000 would come from the contract that's pending, contract amendment that's pending with Community Housing Development Organization. They've identified about $95,000 in needs for capacity building, and we've been holding $100,000 for them. So, that is the proposal, make those for monetary changes, give us $400,000, and then if the Commission approves, we would bring back an agreement between the county and Salina Airport Authority to award them that $400,000. They would then enter into a contract with SkyWest Airlines. The second change is to adjust the budget for the Choose Salina County app. The Commission actually approved already the second year for the Choose Salina County app, but when we went back to, we talked about a contract issue earlier, so this is another contract issue. We went back to them and said, okay, Commission's approved it, please give, give us the contract for year two, and they said, oh, well, we've had a price increase because inflation. And I'm like, oh, well, we haven't been holding that much money for you. So, we would need to reallocate a little bit of money in order for that to happen as well. There is some funding within, within the business category. We had been holding money for the, there's a per-business-per-month fee that we are charged to make the reimbursements to businesses. We've been holding that in a separate category, it's actually functionally coming out of the reimbursements line, and so we could just consolidate that. That would cover most of that cost increase, and then a further reduction of $3,617 from broadband infrastructure, again, with that same thought that, that based on where we are, that, that can be reduced without any major impact. So, the question then becomes, okay, COLU has raised their price for what they would charge us for support of the Choose Salina County app, is it worth it? And so, I have attached to the report today, an overview that COLU has provided, and they have generated, they estimate, $986,000 in economic activity. And they base that on both the value of the stars, the redeeming that has occurred, and the value of the sales that have occurred in order to generate that number of stars. And so, that's a pretty significant amount of economic activity in the community. It's an economic multiplier of 15.62%. And so, based on that result, staff continues to recommend that we, that we go ahead and renew, even at this little bit higher annual rate. We did, however, in the conversations with them, get them to commit to hold next year at the same rate as, as this year. That, that presentation that was attached to, your documentation does show the continued growth. We have continued to have increase in registrations, people downloading the app, linking their cards. We have over 3,000 users, registered users of the, of the app now, and so, again, staff would recommend that, that we continue to support that for at least one more year. And with that, I would like to acknowledge Tim Rogers from the Salina Airport Authority, see if he has anything to add to my presentation on the first item, and then after that, I would be happy to take Commission questions about either of those items.
Good morning, Tim. Before we start, I want to ask one question, though. The amount that we approved for the Houston flight, getting it going initially, was that a million dollars?
It was $1,640,000.
And we got that money back?
Well, we didn't get it back because we never spent it, it stayed with us.
But I mean, I thought we.
Yeah, but we, what we ended up doing was we reallocated it. You'll recall that we had a $2 million unexpected expense last year.
Oh, bingo.
So, that's where a lot of that money went.
Bingo.
Yeah.
Sorry I brought that up. Good morning, Mr. Rogers.
Good morning, Chair, Chairman, and members of the Commission, thank you so much for your chance. Phil did a great job of summarizing kind of, where we went back after, you know, needing the, the minimum, minimum revenue guarantee, the 1.64 million was not going to work, it was not the path forward. We went back and worked on other strategies to go ahead and improve schedule air service for, for the Salina-Salina County North Central Kansas market, and there are a number of strategies to use. The MRG is one strategy, it's not very sustainable, it's sometimes, I can't see many MRGs that truly work, there is a higher risk with those, because the passenger load doesn't meet the projections, and the money runs out, the airline usually, you know, pulls, cancels the service. So we looked at other ways, other means, and kind of started coming back to identifying with SkyWest Airlines, what, SkyWest, what's your needs? What are you looking for, where they're going? And maintenance came up, and actually... And maintenance came up and actually third party outsourcing maintenance came up out of the discussions with SkyWest Airlines. And SkyWest Airlines does their internal maintenance right now, all internal, about 13 different locations. They still have a choice to do additional maintenance within their existing maintenance shops in in locations, but you know, they're they're overwhelmed. What they the airline needs is a location to actually outsource the maintenance for the aircraft that are serving the smaller essential air service communities of which there they serve about 50 of the 150 or so essential air service communities, small and rural communities. It's a perfect match for Salina, Saline County and the airport because of One Vision Aviation and ability to is already doing work for SkyWest. We reminded SkyWest, you know, you're already sending jets to to one to Salina and One Vision Aviation. There's two two jets down there right now. So the going, the concept of overnight maintenance base was the real key. The key is overnight maintenance is where jets fly through, fly on a scheduled route, carrying passengers. They land and the jet goes into overnight maintenance right away that night, then comes back out to fly the next morning. A CRJ 200 regional jet that flies in and out of Salina, that's used for these smaller communities and for the air service, requires overnight maintenance every third night by federal FAA regulations. So the jets are flowing, need to flow through. And what are our advantages? How do we compete for this? Well, we have a great location, situated in the middle somewhat, equal distance, Denver, Chicago, Houston, all routes that SkyWest flies as United Express. We have One Vision Aviation in place already. SkyWest is already sending aircraft there. But going and setting up an overnight maintenance space is a significant expense. That is a move. How do you incent and provide the incentive? And the reason for airline executives, the senior executives to go ahead and approve and make the decision is where the incentive is needed. To provide $900,000 and funded as as outlined by Phil to go ahead and provide the incentive to go ahead and make the investment in the startup of an overnight maintenance space. Now here's the significance of an overnight maintenance base. And we look at other communities that have air service at a level far greater than they would normally have based upon just their market. Springfield, Missouri, Abilene, Texas, for example, have had maintained airline overnight maintenance spaces since the early 1990s, set up by American Airlines, American Eagle. Those communities have, for example, Springfield has six daily departures, nonstop to Dallas, Fort Worth. They would probably be only only have two without the maintenance space. So that's the key. And the maintenance space, once it goes into operation, kind of stays in operation. That's the example of those of those two communities. The flights in and out of the community for overnight maintenance are not really been determined and viewed by the airline as just a cost of doing business. So you're not the community, the airline is not depending upon the the numbers, the revenue of passenger revenue in and out, the jet has to get in for maintenance. So it's actually a higher priority. So a jet in Denver that's scheduled for maintenance in Salina, it's a high priority to move that jet so it can be in service the next morning and moving ahead. So we are working quickly to secure the final final agreement with SkyWest Airlines based upon approval of the county share of of the incentive. We'd be working with Phil and City Manager Max Greg. We would finalize the agreement with SkyWest Airlines. The Airport Authority will make a final consideration and approval at their meeting on February 15th. We hope to have this this in place. We are working on some some kind of tightening up an agreement that we have been working on. We want to make sure that we put in there, well, let's start the incentive reimbursement of incentives of expenses to start up to SkyWest Airlines to start up the maintenance base. You know, they do, there's a there's expenses are not reimbursed until after, actually they have actually started and they've started the the maintenance operations. We'd like to spoke to the City Commission last night about making sure that this expires, this this incentive expires at the end of the year. If they don't start the the base, the operation, then the incentive will be, that'll be the clawback. They've got to start. We do have a renewal of the essential air service contract for Salina. That proposals are due right now for that on March 1st. The airline's interested. SkyWest is interested in wanting to continue to serving Salina, Kansas. We'll make the agreement contingent upon them being awarded another contract, two year or three year. And that ties into the length, we can expectation that we'll be able to keep them moving ahead. I'll pause there and see if there's any questions that the commission may have and be glad to answer. And thank you for your consideration of this request.
My question regarding starting up a base here, SkyWest would not bring people to town. They would be using a service provided by One Vision. Is that correct?
It's a combination. They will contract with with Sky with One Vision Aviation, but then they also bring in their own employees that rotate through that are the airline reps that are in in inside it to monitor and be a part of it. But they'll just rotate through on on a on a weekly basis coming in and out. But the I guess SkyWest would be contracting with One Vision Aviation for the overnight maintenance.
But physically, they would bring some people to town that would would permanently be domiciled in Salina?
No, they would they would move through.
Okay.
So that's and that's the reason, that's the advantage. They don't have to hire and locate permanent employees here. So it's but it does add approximately three to six employees, expecting three, start three aircraft overnight. And so and that is a flow. If you look at three hubs that we're flowing through, Denver, Chicago, and the third is most very probably and very and we until they build the schedule, that's where Houston comes into the flow of flowing through aircraft through from Houston through this maintenance space. Could have one could one month, it could be two flights, two aircraft flowing through schedule. It means we have they have to fly two jets like from Denver to Salina. And so the schedule will fluctuate. It's not limited just to, you know, two or three flights per month. It then increases as they have an increase of maintenance demand and using the overnight maintenance here.
And the number of flights coming in here would not be based upon passenger deployments. It would be based on the fact that they need to get that vehicle, that plane to Salina for maintenance and gives us lots of more options.
All the flights that are added in addition to the subsidized federally subsidized flights, Denver and Chicago, one flight Denver, one flight Chicago is the EAS federal subsidy to the airline for that. Everything else is added that gets added to the schedules on the need for to to flow through for maintenance, but they are scheduled and they carry passengers.
Questions?
A couple of questions, Tim. The ones that aren't part of the EAS, will their will pricing be the same for those or will they be?
Oh, yeah. It's exactly the same.
And a physical?
The the round trip fare to Chicago, I think, if I got it correct today, is like $180 round trip. It's like 190 to Chicago, 180 to that doesn't change. That fare is going to be.
Whether it's subsidized or not, the fares will be the same.
And part of the startup is that to start up and to start flowing jets from another hub, you know, SkyWest needs to work with United for for gating at that extra that additional hub. They need to set a the the point to point fare is easy to set. SkyWest sets that, but then United has to build the fares through another hub throughout the entire system and all the connecting flights that would be potential out of a like a hub like a Houston if it's they have to build all that. But then that all ties into the same competitive pricing that we have already to Chicago, Denver and beyond.
And all the this maintenance would be done at One Vision's facility there?
Yeah, One Vision has leased multiple hangars now at from the Airport Authority and there is space available to do this work. They're have the they have the capacity now and they're kind of holding a spot for this additional work to come.
So they were brought on board this concept early on to make sure they would be a partner and?
Yes.
And they have the personnel to to make this work.
They do, very much so.
And the funding, this 900,000 is going to be coming from different entities. Year two, it's not sustainable.
This is a one time, one time incentive. So there is not a year two. It is one year. So it's a good question and that that I should have mentioned at the big at the beginning of my remarks, but it is a one year incentive. So it is to start up, jumpstart the the overnight maintenance and then from there it it continues on.
You know, I tell you what, Tim, you know, back from being on the City Commission and seeing, you know, the way Salina was moving, you know, we had the old prop service and now we're into the, you know, into the jet service and, you know, Salina is moving forward. We don't move forward, we're going to be moving backwards again and we don't want to do that. You know, this nonstop to Houston, you know, everybody knows, once you get to Houston, you can go anywhere in the world from Houston. I mean, take about any flight there is there to go. I see nothing but, you know, positive and good, good moving forward with this whole thing. I know that there's a one year left on SkyWest contract and I sure hope that, you know, they're able to continue after, you know, that the different entities have come forward to put this money in.
Well, it's another way to also provide the incentive for, once you have an airline's overnight maintenance base here, they're going to continue. And it is, and Phil pointed out, this is also a means to then with the additional passenger loads, additional revenue that, you know, we've done the our air service consultant, I say our, Gary Foss with the Arc Star Group, who really represents, you know, the, you know, the city, the county airport authority and the area. The numbers, you know, are very good, that there will be a lot of a lot of passengers using a connection to Houston if that comes and when that comes on.
Now, SkyWest is not the only airline. I mean, it's just say if something would happen and SkyWest didn't get their contract renewed, would any of the other aircraft that would be coming, you know, if we'd have somebody else come in, would they use the same service just like SkyWest would be?
Well, this is where it gets down to an overnight maintenance base and it will be very specific for this type of flying to SkyWest Airlines. So SkyWest has to has to draft and develop and present for approval to the Federal Aviation Administration, called operation specifications just for this operation. And that that is not transferable to another air carrier. So this and with all the customers that One Vision has and all the different, you know, aircraft you see parked in and around the hangar, each one is a separate operating line of operational operational specs, specifications, ops specs for that that business. So this, and again, the example going back, it's a Springfield, Abilene. In the 1990s, these overnight maintenance spaces were established and they haven't gone away, but they're specific to that aircraft, to that airline and aircraft type that are coming in and out for the overnight.
So then if if SkyWest didn't get renewed, they still could be bringing planes in for their maintenance, just like they are, not even have the.
They will have that option.
Okay.
And if they if that's the case, they're still going to schedule them in and out because that's how you schedule overnight maintenance. You don't deadhead that jet. It's coming in for a 30 day heavy check. Yeah, it just flies in, you know, but the overnight maintenance in the industry, they schedule those flights in and out because it has to be, that's just the practice.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any jeopardy to Salina Airport losing EAS because of this?
No, it would not be so. Sorry to go down this rabbit hole, but anyway, the EAS program is the eligibility is the program is designed for the community's eligibility. So if a community is eligible for EAS subsidy, doesn't come to the community, it actually then the air carriers can can apply for the subsidy to serve that eligible community. So this does not, we will always will not lose eligibility. What we want to be able to do is rely less on the need for subsidy. Garden City is a good example. Their service has been built to the level that they require less subsidy than they did in, you know, 10 years ago, five years ago. So it's been declining and it's and that's indicates there's more profit, more revenue out of that market than and does not require a $4 million subsidy. Current subsidy in Garden City is $1 million. So that is paid to the air carrier.
Thank you.
Okay, before I bring it back to the commission for action, is there any public comment? Or am I ready for that?
Lauren, Manos Salina. That's just like that pilot program you've had for these wind towers. Why are the taxpayers subsidizing private enterprise? If you ain't making money, close the doors. That's what we do in agriculture. If we ain't making money, we close the doors. So if that airline ain't making money, close the doors. You're subsidizing private businesses. That's not right.
Thank you.
Mr. Haines, you referred to a pilot shortage.
Please state your name, sir, for the record.
Excuse me. My voice is bad. My name is Terry Berger. I'm a county resident. And you mentioned the pilot shortage. Well, I want you to know I'm a short pilot. I've been involved in the Salina Airport for over 50 years in this community. And you'll have to excuse me if I if I blow my horn just a little bit, but your airport is critical to the growth of your community. It brings in business. What we have out there that Tim's done such a good job of managing over the decades is a tremendous asset. It's an asset, not a liability. And we've developed that asset with businesses and and growth through both aviation and private other entity businesses. Just yesterday, the City Commission approved a structural that will add to this growth in business out there at the Airport Authority. So this idea of creating a maintenance hub is going to attract additional traffic into our community and traffic means money. And so I would encourage you to support this effort. I realize this gentleman spoke about agriculture. Well, there's nothing a bigger gamble than agriculture. Well, this is a way of rolling the dice for your community to to grow this particular area and help this asset. And I would encourage you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Not, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the changes as presented and authorized by your signature the KOLU order form.
It has been moved and second that we approve the the changes as presented and authorized by the signature of the chairman for the KOLU order form. And all of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, motion carries four zero. And thank you, Mr. Rogers, and and thank you for the Salina Community Economic Development Organization and the things that they're doing for us also, Mitch. Thank you. We'll move to informational items. Item number one.
Planning and zoning end of year report with Tim Hamilton, planning and zoning director.
Morning, Tim.
Good morning.
Again.
Again. This is just my update for all of last year, just to kind of recap what's what staff's been doing. The planning board held eight public hearings in 2022. We had six conditional use permits and two subdivision exceptions. The commission, along with staff's assistance, did complete the update of our comprehensive plan. Staff was also involved in an amendment to to the adopted address policy to bring it into compliance with our recently or adopted 911 system currently in use. Environmental Services continues to participate in the Mid-America Farm Show, providing water testing for county residents. Along with the successful relocation of both Environmental Services and Planning to 229 North 9th Street, staff welcomed a new administrative assistant, Coralie Murphy, to replace Kathleen Malone Crouch, who retired. to replace Kathleen Malone Crouch, who retired in December. As far as building permit summation, totals for last year were first 77, and in 2021, we had a total of 73. What that includes, last year we had 17 new homes, as opposed to 2021 where we had 13. So we had a few, few new housing starts there. Plans for this year will include that we'll continue to use the Zoom for our planning commission meetings, even though the pandemic has pretty much, you know, slowed down enough to where public can participate. We found that that's a really good, efficient tool for those, especially for commissioners that aren't able to make it to the, the meeting. So we'll continue to do that. And the zoning and subdivision regulations will be updated. See, now typically the way it works is, once the comprehensive plan is, is adopted, then we, we, the, the next project to implement that plan would be to update our zoning and sub regs. And that will be the, the project I'll be working on with the planning commission this year. As far as the budget, our revenue for last year was $118,070, and as opposed to 2021, which was 97, four, 745. The, a lot of that, and kind of the caveat to that is the, that includes all of the fees that we've taken in on the environmental services side as well as the planning and zoning side. So it's all kind of combined into one, so.
Tim, on behalf of the County Commission, I apologize to you for having to uproot you and your offices and move them to another location. On the other hand, it was beyond our control to have to, to forcibly do that. On the, I also want to thank you for, for doing it. I have heard zero complaints from your department on being relocated to smaller facility. It's clean, but it's not exactly ideal working offices, but thank you for your cooperation.
Well, we're making it work.
I, I see that. So other comments from the commissioners?
Tim, when's your meetings, the planning commission meetings scheduled now?
They're scheduled now for the fourth Tuesday of each month.
Seven o'clock?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Not? So, thank you, Mr. Hamilton. We'll move to item number two.
County Administrator's Update with Philip Smith Haines, County Administrator.
Good morning, one more time, commissioners. A few items for today. To start with, just an update on legislative happenings in Topeka. The legislature has been in session for just about a month now, and so things are starting to gear up. And there are quite a few bills working their way through processes. Yesterday was actually the last day for non-exempt committees to introduce new bills. But I've been getting updates both from KAC, the League, and also from Eric Sexton with the Folsen Siegkin Group that we talked about earlier. So some of the, just a smattering of, of the things that are going on. One issue is the bill that would allow county treasurers to collect more revenue for vehicle registration offices. That is back, you may recall that that was passed last year, or it passed the first house and, and made it into committee in the second house last year, and then ended up being gutted and turned into something completely different. But the treasurers would very much like to see that move forward. So certainly, I think we're supportive of that. Another issue that's going on, since we just heard from Mr. Hamilton, there is an effort to eliminate cities' ability to apply zoning regs outside of their city limits. It's sometimes known as the extraterritorial jurisdiction or the three-mile zone. Many cities, in order to protect their future growth areas, have had the ability to apply some of their zoning regs in unincorporated county. That's obviously something that the cities are opposing very strongly. The counties kind of have a mixed bag of, of opinions on that. If that does pass, I think, you know, we would probably need to have some conversations with the City of Salina about the, the future of that. They, they really have a one-mile zone, but have, have some conversations about that because I think there are some pieces of that that we would probably want to keep in place if we have the ability to do so. Another item, just of interest, I know we had a discussion at your commission visioning session last week regarding litter. And so the legislature, there's a bill that would preempt cities and counties from implementing bags on, implementing bans on plastic bags or, or plastic bag fees. So that's going on. There are some notice bills, one of which would require appraisal notices to include additional years of past data. Certainly nothing wrong with that, although in discussions with County Appraiser Sean Robertson, he said, "Well, that's great, but it may push your appraisal notice from a front-and-back document to a three-page document, which would require additional paper, potentially additional postage, et cetera." So that's one of those sort of unintended consequence things that sometimes the legislature doesn't fully appreciate when they think they're doing a good thing. Another bill that would allow local jurisdictions to issue their own revenue-neutral notices if the county clerk failed to do so for any reason. Fortunately, we haven't had that situation here, but apparently something occurred in another county last year. They also, there's a bill working its way through to allow counties and cities to establish the fund that we're required to have for the opioid settlement money. We went ahead and did that last year with our Home Rule Authority. I don't think we really need that bill, but they're working on it nonetheless. And then another one that has potential to impact us is the sales tax holiday for back-to-school shopping. There's a proposal, or I think there are actually four different proposals around having an ability to buy clothes and notebooks and different things for about a four-day period in August of each year and have those not be subject to the sales tax. Unlike the food sales tax bills that passed last year, this one does not appear to exempt the local sales tax. So we would experience some loss of revenue, not sure how much. So legislature busy at work, several things that could potentially impact us. In that vein, this Thursday is County Day at the Capitol, sponsored by the Kansas Association of Counties, and it's an attempt by KAC to make sure that the legislature is informed of what counties do. And so this was started last year. This year, Saline County did sign up for a table. Hannah Bet from my office and a couple other staff are going to make the trek to, to Topeka on Thursday and see if they can have some conversations with legislators about some of these things that we've mentioned. I did mention earlier the commission visioning session that occurred last Tuesday. So just to let you know, we will be bringing back, staff is working on coalescing that information and bringing it back for the commission to approve, make sure that we heard what you said. So not sure if I'll be able to get that on for next Tuesday. It may end up being at the end of this month. And then last but not least, I wanted to mention a couple conferences that I have been to recently. So at the end of January, I went down to Fort Worth and attended the Strategic Government Resources Conference on Servant Leadership. And that was a very interesting conference. It was presented where everything was in a 30-minute session, so it really kept you hopping all day, all day long. It's unusual compared to most conferences. But got a lot out of that, in particular, found another jurisdiction that does something very similar to what we do for County Inservice Day, and have linked HR Director Marilyn Lemur up with that organization. And I think she's going to go visit them and see what they do and see if we can get some, some new ideas. So very worthwhile. This Friday afternoon, I will be flying out to Washington DC to attend the NACO Legislative Conference, and I'll be back Monday late afternoon and be here for the Tuesday meeting, but hoping to hear some more information about what's going on in DC for that. So that is my update for today, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from anyone for Phil? Thank you. Item number three.
Commissioners' comments.
I will say that it was two weeks ago, actually, since our last meeting, but I mean, we had our vision meeting last week, so we didn't have anything to say. I did attend the Airport Authority and the Combination SKEDO meeting. And for me to tell you what happened there, you've already heard it all today. So thanks for those updates. Anyone else?
Since our last meeting, I did get to, we had our meeting of the cybersecurity meeting. That went really well, went through a lot of the, you know, security threats and things that, you know, that could, could hit the county and things that we're doing precautions to take care of that. Yesterday, I attended the Health Department meeting and orientation. That went very well. Along with that, I would like to ask the commission, and most of these meetings that I've gone to, and I know that all of us have got, you know, the four meetings, five meetings a month here, plus our other meetings that we go to that we're assigned to and everything. And I found out there's a lot of notes to be taken during those meetings. And in the last two or three meetings I've been to, the staff here has been using what they call a remarkable tablet. And the remarkable tablet is just a note-keeping tablet that will cut down on actually paper use. If we look today or look this time, we had 168 pages on the agenda. When you start taking notes during all these meetings, there's, there's a lot of notes. And I would like to request that the commission take a look about purchasing some remarkable tablets for the commission itself to use in their different meetings to help cut down on copy paper, to help cut down on the cost of each copy that's being printed, and also for the convenience of being able to take these notes and not having all these notes around and losing whatever, you know, some of them after you come out of one of your meetings. Like I said, I do think that it would be a benefit for the commission to use these tablets. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? All right, announcements. Sorry, Jamie, I jumped ahead of you. No announcements? I will take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we adjourned today's meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both same sign, thank you. We are adjourned.